Welcome to the work session for 6022. Go ahead and jump straight into it with items of information for Dr. Spence.
The public hearing is at five.
That's what I mean.
Jared don't forget anything either.
For a minute or two.
Jared don't remember anything.
I missed another button. You had it down.
Give us our last COVID update.
Captain?
Yes, good afternoon. So our update today includes the newer graph that we've looked at a couple of times. It currently on the website shows us a medium level for Glenn County. But I would let you know as well that this is only updated weekly. And so this was last updated on May 27th. So it's not current as of today, so that you would know that. Our age data also, that report sunsetted last week, similar to how we're sunsetting some of the information in the bottom graph. Has the blowout showing that as of that last week that the data was captured, there were 10 total cases that were recorded for school aged children in the area. And that was as of May 23rd. Our last posting on the website for May 27th shows that we ended with five active cases for the year, which still had us at a very low rate for positive cases. And then again, the next chart will show the past week as of May 23rd, what the data was looking like for age groups in Glenn County. And then the last one that has any updated information is the state graph that shows where we are with, it was updated this afternoon as of June 1st yesterday with 13 confirmed cases and a seven day average of 8.4 cases. So if you have any questions about that, the information was put on the website Friday that we would be, that would be our final posting unless we get to a point that we see a surge in cases that would, you know, require us to start sharing that information again. But our reports to DPH have stopped. They are no longer requiring those. And so unless you have any specific questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
We're operating with those things.
Move down to three C.
Yes, sir. Three C is the Performance Matters Renewal. This is renewal of the platform that we currently and have been using for a number of years now that we use for our data management, all of our assessment data, and then the ability to build assessments is in the platform, as well as our instrument to evaluate staff who are not included in the state evaluation system for teques and leaks. And Dr. Nelson and HR primarily work in that evaluation core classified license as it's indicated on the quote. The other two pieces are related to assessment. And so it would be funded both from the testing general fund budget and human resources general fund budget. And it's just a request to continue that renewal as we continue to use those products in the schools.
Any questions?
And then if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and do three N.
Three N on the second page.
It is related to an RFP that was put out for a teacher for the vision impaired. This has been a position for a number of years that we've kept posted but have been unable to fill. There's definitely a shortage in this area. This current year, we have a contract with the same agency and we have learned that with continuing this, we would be able to keep that same person. And she has definitely demonstrated professional expertise in the area. We've benefited from that ability to contract with her. And so we would look to have that same award to that company who also happened to come in with a lower bid. But our experience with this staff person would definitely have weighed heavily in the decision to request this again. If you have any questions about that request.
Do we still have a similar arrangement with a deaf part of hearing support person?
We kind of have a combination. We have some deaf part of hearing that are employed directly with us, and then we have some interpreters and others that we contract with.
Okay. I just seem to remember last year we had a proposal.
Yes. Those have been specialized areas that are harder and harder to fill. But the student needs still exist, so.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehead.
All right, thank you.
We'll move back up to A2.
Okay, so the budget was advertised May 23rd to be adopted next Tuesday and June 7th. The first part of your book, which is the first, that one right there, Chris, is the summary that is required to be put in the newspaper, two weeks prior to adoption. And it shows at summary level, the consolidated budget projected for next year for the four main categories, which is general funds, special revenue funds, capital projects, and debt service, although that shows zero for next year. We paid off our last bond principal payment August of this last school year, so no more debt service. The next attachment is the detail that we've been reviewing since about March for the general fund. Just to recap, we are projecting a 4% increase in the digest with a 99% collection rate and using the same millage rate, although, as you know, we get the digest July and discuss what the actual digest comes in at and what we want to do budget wise and go through public hearings and adoption on the millage rate. The Q, our QB funds have increased significantly next year, but that's mainly due to, because we've had a loss in students, but it's due to the raise that the state is giving. So the $2,000 that this governor has promised the teachers is included in the QB calculation funding formula. So anytime there's a state mandated raise, your QB money goes up. We are having a slight increase in TRS next year, 19.81 to 19.98, which is only about $125,000 increase to the budget. The state mandated salary increases for the teachers and the drivers will cost about 2.8 million. And as you can see, that's more than what they're actually giving us of 2.3. The normal step increases that we give for certified and non-certified are about 1.5. And then we've discussed several times the need for local raises for several categories of employees at the district based on the salary survey that we participate in when first just at RISA. And Dr. Spence's goal is to be in the top three, to be competitive with our surrounding counties in what they offer their employees. So those raises vary. We've gone through those and the cost of those are about 3.5 million. After doing allotments for next year, we have about 2.9 million in RIF positions and the detail of that is in the back of the vote we'll look at in a minute. New positions are 2.8, so it's a net decrease in staffing for next year, just slightly. The decrease in department budgets is mainly the server leases that are expiring and some Dell leases that are expiring, so they're no longer required to be budgeted for. We do have an operating transfer that we, because we are in excess of the 15% threshold that's allowed for fund balance in general fund. And that, the current budget is at 5.5, and I left that as a line item just to remind you that, so in this budget, next budget year, we'll be transferring 5.5 million into the local capital projects fund. And then the estimate for the new financial and HR software package. So bottom line, revenues increased about 4.81% and expenditures about 5.17%, which is good. You want that to be close, revenues covering your expenditures. And out of the increase in the expenditures, 2% is mandated, two out of the 0.7. Beginning fund balance is 28.1 million and we're estimated to end next school year at The rest of the reports for the general fund are just detailed information for the different budget increases and what area it affects, the revenues, the expenditures. Next year, the salary and benefits will be about 86% of total budget in the general fund, which is normal, what it usually, actually a little bit lower than what it normally runs. The second tab is special revenue funds. And as you know, we have a lot of federal money, our normal Title I and our special ed funds, as well as the additional CARES Act funds. You'll notice that the total budget from '22 to '23 went up $47 million because of CARES Act. And we, I show a budget comparison for each one of those title grants and a little explanation on each page of what that grant actually does and pays for. And within your special revenue fund category, you have athletics in there also, and we're self-insured for workers comp. So that, those budgets are categorized as special revenue. And then your capital projects is our East Plus projects. We are, we most definitely will collect before the five years are up for this East Plus. It's now moved from June 2025 to May of 2025 and could be even sooner than that. We had another record high collections, two months in a row at 2.9. So the projects that will, we'd be spending money on next year, but in the budget will be the Coastal Community Center for the Arts, the turf fields to be finished up, St. Simons, obviously, Needwood, Golden Isles, Oglethorpe, Satilla, and then the Goodman and Truitts. And then the debt services paid off, so that comparison shows no budget for next year. Our budgeted positions are increasing by a total of 19.5. The majority of that is CARES Act related because we actually ended up rifting 36 positions in the general fund and only adding 31.5. So the total gain is because of the CARES Act positions that we're doing for next school year. That's our Horizons Academy mainly. And then the rest of this is salary schedules. Lots of salary schedules. Another year down. Any questions?
Go on to the next thing.
Yep, April financial report. We had two budget amendments in April that increased the overall revenues and expenditures to the general fund. And the first one is the QBE stipend. The state gave every employee K through 12 in the state of Georgia $2,000, full time and part time, 50% employees. And the grant was 2.9 million. So that is an increase to the general fund that will come out next year, but it's a one-time grant. And then we had an increase in the general fund for, we had a bus allotment, one bus, 77,300, even though our buses cost $149,000. The year-to-date revenues are 94%. Local tax receipts for April, low over 1.5. Year-to-date expenses are, represent 78.4% of the budget and we're 83% through the year. So again, we are saving money for unfilled positions in the general fund. And as I just stated, March sales tax collections were received in April in the amount of 2.9 million, that's 17% higher than last April. And year-to-year from April last year to April this year, we're 15% above last year's collections. And then in May, we received another 2.9. So sales tax is booming. Can't explain it.
I don't think we ever have been able to explain it.
It's unreal. Any questions for April?
I think they're sliding in all the back taxes we know have been out there for a long time. They just haven't been able to ever quantify. I know we had that one, that one time, that one month late.
Yeah, they, they did an audit and we got $875,000. Yeah, I wouldn't doubt that. I think the governor's trying to dump a lot of money right now to get elected.
Thank you, Ms. Preston.
As far as advertisement, you want to go, we're done with the, we got one more hearing, right?
No, no more hearing. And we just adopt this budget on next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And then we're done until the military comes in July, late July, early August. Hopefully we'll get information and line up with the work session and meeting to adopt a budget.
Gotcha. All right. Thanks again, another pleasant news, I guess, better than what we've had many, many years ago, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And your staff. Make sure you tell them thank you as well.
I will.
I know it's a lot of stuff to put together, so thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Good evening, everyone. All right. Well, I'm here to report on our projects that we have going on, which are a number of projects. And so I'll just jump right in and I'll talk about each one of those, give you kind of a highlight. And then as you have any questions, just stop me and we'll talk about those at that time, okay? Our new Altama Elementary School is complete. Last time I was here, I talked to you about some final things that we had to get fixed, which one was a roof leak that was going on. That has been completed. The final inspections have been completed. So right now, we're working for the last fine tuning of that facility, and that is to work with the AIG engineers to make sure that we fine tune our HVAC system to be able to handle our hot and humid environment as efficiently as possible. So we're trying to optimize that right now, working with them and making some adjustments to get that right. At that point, when we do get that dialed in, we'll finish up that project. Glenn Academy Gym Edition, that project is currently on schedule for completion in August. Our final duct work is being installed currently. Preparation has been made to install the windows. That'll be our next, next big event that happens. I mentioned that last time we were here, we're climatizing that building so that we can get the flooring material in for the gym floor.
Mr. Denzil, do you see that being a problem for opening of school?
I do not.
As far as the use?
It looks like it's on schedule at this point right now. And that does kind of bring up, right now, there are supply chain issues, and I'm sure you all realize that across the nation, world. And so we have been very fortunate. Last time, I reported here last month, I said the same thing. We've been able to pull off everything staying on target, and we still are at that point today, and I'm glad to say that. I don't know that that will always be the report, but I'm glad to say that all of our projects are still on target at this point, okay? Had a really big scare on one yesterday, but we got it all.
Got it all worked out.
Any other questions about that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. St. Simons Elementary School replacement, our exterior brick is 70% done there with completion target date for that brick being the 16th of this month. 14 of 15 AC units have been placed on the roof and are being connected and functionable. Our gypsum board is being installed throughout the interior of the building at this time, so it's starting to take shape from the interior, so you can start to see where the classrooms, what they're going to look like, hallways, et cetera. And the project's on schedule for occupancy of the second story building of the end of December or after the December break. December or after the December break. Needwood middle renovations, the first and second wings are completed and occupied with the exception of minor work in the restrooms. The third wing renovation is underway. Cafeteria, gym, and administrative spaces began this last week and we're moving items out of there and moving into that summer concentrated work. Teachers, I'm sure, administrators, and contractors and subcontractors are very happy to have the summer to be able to work at a pace that is more conducive to getting the job done. So that's a nice time for them during the summer to be able to really make some progress. Our kitchen renovations are in design and will be completed during the summer of 2023. Any questions about that one? Golden Isles Elementary renovations, we're getting pretty close to closing that one up. This is the one we had the scare on. We thought that we were going to have a supply chain issue with our coolers, walk-in coolers. It was a, I want to say a six-month, five to six-month delay and that was going to put us in November for those walk-in coolers. So we had a whole plan put together on how to piece things together and get something up and running for the beginning of the school year and Ms. Shelley Daniels came through and made some phone calls and I'm not sure why her words are magic, but they are. And the, the cooler is now going to be delivered on July 8th. So November to July, that's, that's a big change. Thank you so much. So as of right now, there are a couple of smaller items in the kitchen that do have, that may not be here for the first day of school, but we have items available that we'll be able to have in place so that everything will be functioning and that students will receive hot meals that first day of school, just like they're supposed to. The gym floor is being, it's being demolished now and that's after we just completed the painting of the ceilings. Also, the lighting has been done at Golden Isles. Classroom and administrative areas, there will be completed on Sunday is the date and Monday morning, we move all of the materials back in from the old Altama into Golden Isles. And as we speak, those things are being placed on pallets inside the building and shrink-wrapped so that we'll be able to make that an efficient move from one place to the other. So that's a lot of work, a lot of hard work goes into getting that ready in, in all aspects, teachers and people that work for us in the maintenance department as well. So a lot of, a lot of hands really pitching in and doing a great job. So the kitchen work there is progressing and it will be ready for the beginning of the school year. Oglethorpe Point Elementary School renovations, we again have remained on schedule. Two wings are completed at this point and occupied. The remainder of the building, with the exception of the kitchen, which is scheduled for the summer of 2023, the remainder of the building is underway. So we'll be fit, moving into the administrative area in the next few days and we'll, we'll tackle that and everything should be good to go for the beginning of school at the beginning of the school year for 2022, 23. All right. Satilla Marsh Elementary renovations, that one is, construction documents are currently being developed by Mr. Tooten and his office and construction contract will be awarded fall of 2022. And that is one of the ways that we're looking at tackling some of the supply chain issues and you'll see one of those action items that I'll talk about just in just a few minutes. We'll probably be asking for things earlier than normal in a project cycle and we may be asking them, asking for them in smaller phases so that we can make sure that we get items in and we can stay on schedule. So a lot of lead time required right now in ordering materials to stay on schedule for projects. So that's, that's where we are with Satilla Marsh. We do have a challenge there, the number of students in that school, it's very, it's packed, density of the population. So we're in the process of designing a way to be able to tackle that mostly during the times when school was not in session during the summer. All right. Our Glenn Academy existing gym renovations, Tyson has sent a contract to stage front systems for new sound syst, for a new sound system. Sound system, handrails, exterior lighting, and lighting over the bleachers are tentatively scheduled for completion prior to the 2022 basketball season. Our Glenn Academy annex repairs, Mr. Tooten and Mr. Tyson Construction have developed and proposed a plan of action. That is something that we just put together in the last couple of days and so it actually, I have a cost proposal, action item, and so I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about that as that comes up. So we'll, we'll move on to those action items at this point, if that's okay.
Questions at this point?
I had a question. I don't remember, didn't you address the turf? Do we have any more information about that?
Yes, we actually do. I didn't know if, would you like, okay. Yeah, we're happy to say that, I wish I'd have sent a picture over so we could have had it up here, that the turf is now gone off of the stadium field as of today.
Not turf.
Sorry, the grass, yeah. The old, the old term for grass, turf. So we, we went out today and we flagged our, what we're going to do with the dirt that was removed. We're going to create a new cross-country.
Track?
And we have those people that are taking the dirt off there that now know exactly where to place it so that we'll have some challenging hills and things like that on the track. So we're looking forward to that as well. That is the first of the three projects. We were very happy to hear this, over the last month, there was a lot of scares on supply chain issues with the crushed stone and everything. Well, we were able to negotiate that and the company was able to move the date that they started up to today instead of mid-month. So it looks like those are going to be on schedule. Mr., Mr. Denzel, anything else?
I called the guy again after this afternoon. It will be, we're on schedule for the stadium, we're on schedule for Glenn Academy in Brunswick High September 1st, which is not what we originally wanted, but compared to where we were a month ago, we will, we will take it. And the cross-country course, Mr. Denzel and I flagged that out today. The dirt will be starting on that tomorrow. And so we're moving along really well. So we're on, we're on schedule. I've been to Brunswick High School today and they're very happy because we were looking at October possibly for their turf and now we're looking at September 1st at the latest.
All right. Any other questions?
The goalposts fell down when we, when they tried to take a wrench and take it down, it just fell off. So we're probably going to need new goalposts.
I was going to say that was part of it.
All of our post schools in the stadium will get new goalposts.
And those were the original goalposts from 1985?
1985. They were put out, they survived four hurricanes.
All right, Tony, ask him. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Denzel on that section? Let's move down to 3F.
Rizley Middle School, we have a 35-ton HVAC unit that supplies air to the admin area and adjacent hallways. That unit has had continual issues and is often not operational, causes problems definitely during this time of the year. There's a 20, 20-plus week lead time on delivery of that item. So in this action item, we're asking for approval of the purchase in the amount of $49,350 for that item.
Is that about the life of that unit? I mean, I know we talked about that, I mean, if it's five or 10 years, what's the life? Is that, is about time for it to?
Anything over 10, you're.
Okay.
All right. At Sterling Elementary, we have a DOAS unit and that is, just in quick summary, that's a unit that kind of brings in fresh air, conditions it, and then puts it into the building. It helps to maintain a dry and cool environment. That unit needs to be replaced and we're asking for approval of the purchase for the train system in the amount of $70,431 there. And the current, the unit is currently not functioning, so they've been doing without that right now. Okay. Georgia Power is asking for preliminary approval for an underground easement adjacent to Golden Isles Elementary School driveway. The easement is going to be used to install underground power lines to a neighboring property that is under development. And this map shows where the power lines would run and the easement. If, if this is approved at this point, then Georgia Power would begin the engineering phase and a formal agreement would follow at a later time. They just want to know, should they plan in this direction at this point?
Let me add something to that. If you look to the right-hand corner where that yellow line comes to an end, that's where the, the new homes are going to be built. And we've talked about that company wanting to get a road going through there and using that road and using our road. So that's what I'm talking about, just to show you where that, what we're talking about. We have not accepted that company's offer yet. Because if you know where, there's a Parker's when you come in on Perry Lane, you take a left right in front of the restaurant there, that's how they're going to get into that, that housing development. The only other way is this one.
And I know we talked about this, volume of vehicles and stuff like that with safety was the only thing, I think that came up.
They were supposed to give us some sort of way to get into the school without having to worry about the traffic coming back out, but the proposal that they sent to me and Mr. Blackerby would not work and so we just, we told them, no, they need to come up with something new before we can bring it to the board because that's, that's not going to work, what they gave us. That was going to cause our parents to come in and have to take a left across the traffic coming from that and that's just not something we can do. Just wanted to show y'all that since we see the map there. This is only for the easement, for the water tower.
Another joint water and sewer purchase, also about running some water and sewer at some point on that same line.
Yeah, that probably will, I don't think they have, I don't think, well, they came, they came with the folks for the road. They were kind of going to do that together.
Moving on to the annex building repair.
As you know, the annex building flooring for the first floor is in need of repair. The annex first floor area is approximately 9,000 square foot. The projected budget is $250 per square foot to replace the flooring system. The, the process of that replacement is to demo the floor system one room at a time to confirm condition of existing wood joists, to determine if it is reasonable to try to repair and replace the wood assembly. Mr. Tooten's initial judgment is that the steel joist, is that steel joist and steel deck with concrete fill is best long-term solu, is the best long-term solution that will eliminate future termite and rot damage. To clean ground area and to, to clean the ground area underneath and excavate to achieve a crawl space that is a height that would be conducive of future maintenance. Right now, it's very tight and hard to get down there and do any maintenance. Install a vapor barrier and concrete slab would be another step and to seal the perimeter to create a conditioned crawl space to reduce moisture migration into the building. To install new steel and concrete floor system with LVT tile and then also install lighting system underneath the floor for maintenance. The process recommended is one room at a time. The budget for the first corner classroom selected will be $168,000 and that's what we're here to ask for your approval for at this time. We'll make the final decision about the flooring replacement system with the owner, us, during the first room to be repaired. So what we're doing is looking at, the way that the flooring is, and we talked about this last month, is the floors are actually built as almost like a mini foundation for each room. So to go in and to do this would give us, this is one of those ask for approval in phases kind of deal. We're going to go in, we're going to look at this, we're going to assess it. That'll give us a better idea of how many rooms we'd be able to tackle in the future and at what times it would be best to do that. Currently, I've talked with Mr. Tooten and he believes that for, to have the least disruptive type of situation, that this be a multi-phased summer possible project. So we would tackle this room this summer, do our assessment and then come back with a plan based on the findings and also other material lead time issues and things like that and come up with a plan based on that. Work scheduled to allow school schedule to continue and the remaining classrooms must be carefully planned if we decided to go that route. At this point, I think that we kind of are leaning towards maybe mostly summer work to address this issue.
I noticed that it mentions LVT for the flooring. If we do the, the steel with the concrete floor system, is it possible to put wood flooring on top of that or it has to be LVT? That's what's in there now, right? Wood floor?
Yes. And wood, of course, was the original floor. It could be. I'm not a fan of wood directly on concrete, but that isn't going to be. If we wanted to do an historic restoration, then we would find a way to do the whole thing out of wood and we could probably save some money by going back with the wood system. The problem with wood is that the timber in that building now is much higher quality timber than we'd ever be able to do in today's world and so I'm a bit skeptical of what it order. Also, the spans are 22 feet and that is a very long span for wood joists. These joists are four, two inches wide, 15 or 16 inches deep and that would be engineered lumber, that is lumber that's made with the process of wood materials and glue and so forth. Could get pressure-treated manufacturer of wood material, if they call it that, but so that's an option I think that we would evaluate, but we're confident we could save money going back with wood. I think we'll understand better the condition of the wood and I'm sure we will, once we uncover and evaluate joists and find out are all of them in bad shape or a few of them in bad shape. That's the thought process that carefully doing the one-room model will lead us to the best solution for the long term, both in terms of selection of materials and, and cost and, and lead time to order materials so that next, next summer you can do a substantial quantity of work with it. We do hope.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I know the question of termites came up with all this. Did we ever find out there was active termites or there was just termite damage or?
No active termites, just termite damage. Any other questions for Mr. Denzel?
You may have answered this already, I apologize. The, the funding for this is coming from out of y'all's budget or is it SLOST or?
I had a note on that.
Is it three? Okay. Any other questions?
I do, you know, Edie must have read my mind. I was going to, because I remember, you know, when you walk in that building, the, you know, the hallway, because this wood right now, right, it's just beautiful. I mean, I hate to, we have to be practical, obviously, going forward, but it's such a beautiful floor and such a great building when you go in. I just wish there was some way we could duplicate. I know sometimes that can get even more expensive, but that's a big budget to replace floors.
Certainly, it's done and we can certainly find a way to put the wood floor even on the concrete substrate, but if we decided to go back to a pressure-treated wood subflooring, that would be a very nasty material. But if we decided to go back to a pressure-treated wood subflooring, that would be a very natural material.
Right.
So that surely is an option, and I agree with you, I, I prefer that.
Because it's a thin plank, too, and it is, is it going along?
It's relatively narrow, it's about, it's probably two inches wide, three quarters wide, something like that. And, and we replace that in order to get close to what was there when we started with the fire. But I think we, my recollection is we only replace that in the garden.
Do they, okay, I could remember. Gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Demcel, if you go back to two C, two C, is it Google report?
So I only have two things to add. So, uh, one is on the SLOST revenue. So we're now swayed to reach our, reach our limit by May of 2025. So we're, you know, we're hoping that it'll fall in the beginning of a quarter because you're allowed to complete the quarter, so, just so that you know that. And then on the performing arts, um, we have a memorandum of understanding now, and so the board of regents will be selecting the team that will do that work. And I believe that we're just going to monitor cash flow. So we will sort of be just bystanders in that process.
And Steve, and Steve Waters and Mike Blackerby are representing the school system homeback committee that they're, that the college has.
Well, we're still with the understanding that, you know, they present us with invoices up to twenty million dollars, and that's it. Gotcha, thank you.
Any questions? Let's see here, Mr. Reiner?
Yes, sir, Dr. Spence, yes, sir, thank you. Very excited tonight to bring you the recommendation for the, our, the evaluation team's recommendation for the new financial management solution for the district. Chris, if you could just click on the PowerPoint, please, just to start with, I'm sorry, there we go, thank you. What's thinking today is culmination of, started right around the first of February, so four months, you know, definitely not me. It's a team effort, you know, as we walk through this process, but, um, definitely been a very informative four months, so I'm very excited to bring this to you tonight. So, uh, Chris, if you get the first slide, wanted to kind of walk back through the whole process. I promise I won't spend a, you know, a lot of time on the first few slides, because these are, you know, we've already presented these, or I presented these in the past. First was just the planning phase, really wanted to see what other districts were using in the state. Kind of knew pretty much just from my previous experience with other districts, but just kind of wanted to get a feel for that. Majority used Munis by Tyler Technologies or Smart Fusion by Harris School Solutions, and then also PC Genesis, which is a state-supported software. You know, really, the, the main two are Munis and Smart Fusion. PC Genesis is really designed more for smaller systems, not systems our size. So then kind of searched for districts that have recently converted off of the AS400, which is our current platform. Had conversations with each one of those districts. You know, just a small list there. Recently, you've got five districts. I think we're one of maybe two or three districts that are still actually running an AS400 in the state right now. Uh, there used to be a group, um, most of these were part of that group, uh, that was supported by a company out of northeast Georgia that kind of provided that support for the AS400. We have in-house support with Mary, but they had outside, and then I think that company decided, you know, these districts started pulling away, so. So that's kind of what's happened with that and that group. I don't, I'm not sure if it even still exists, but, um, Chris, if you don't mind, the next slide, please. So to start the planning phase, I met with Mrs. Saunders just to develop a tentative timeline for our request for proposal. I met with the different areas, mainly accounting, focusing on financial payroll, accounts payable, purchasing. Met with human resources, uh, just to kind of formulate that RFP. And then we came with an evaluation team, several of those members are here tonight, so if we have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. But again, like I said last time I presented, I don't want to be the one voice, you know, I, I think it was definitely a team effort. So we had sixteen members on that evaluation team just from different areas. We had school nutrition, um, purchasing, accounting, HR, federal programs, technology, of course. So we kind of tried to cover a wide gamut there. Chris, if you could get the next slide, please, thank you. Uh, request for proposal was issued back on March third. We had three vendors that responded to that. Tyler Technologies, which is Munis, Harris School Solutions, Smart Fusion, were, were chosen to continue in the process. The other vendor did not meet the qualifications we put forth in the RFP, so we disqualified them in the beginning of the process. They didn't fill out the right paperwork. So, or I think they were actually missing a couple of documents, and I think Mrs. Saunders asked them, and it just, we weren't going to get those pieces, so we disqualified them. So Tyler held a demo for us on April twenty-first. Harris School Solutions held one on April twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, it was a two-day demo. We went and did school site visits in Bullock County and also Bryan County. Bullock has been on Smart Fusion since two thousand and four. Bryan has been on Munis, I can't remember exactly what Mrs. James told me of it, but they've been on Munis for a good while now, and she's, her history with Munis goes all the way back to nineteen ninety-nine in Lowndes County, so I, we, we got two very good experiences by there and there. We held debrief meetings after each demo and each site visit. So on the next slide now, please, Chris, thank you. So, um, we had a rubric that we designed that was part of the RFP process that really focused on five areas. Corporate strength, viability and direction was fifteen percent. Application function, functionality, which is huge, was twenty-five percent. The infrastructure and design principles, fifteen percent. And then, to me, one of the most important things is the implementation support services, so we had twenty-five percent. Cost would be in twenty percent. The rubric was completed by eleven team members. You may ask, why not all sixteen? We didn't have all sixteen members that were able to get through the whole process. So basically, at the end of it, I said, if you feel comfortable completing the rubric, please do that. And, you know, we had some that weren't able to go on site visits, it's a busy time of year. So they weren't able to go on site visits, they weren't able to do, so we did get it completed by eleven team members. The rubric scores were then tabulated by Mrs. Saunders, resulting in the following. Harris School Solutions had a, a total score averaged amongst those eleven of ninety-four, and Tyler Technologies at seventy-two. I will say it was unanimous amongst all eleven members for Harris School Solutions. As you can tell by the scores, but also there was, you know, it was a completed, even the ones who weren't able to complete the rubric, it was still unanimous amongst our team members, if they didn't feel comfortable completing the rubric. So on the next slide, um, we had another meeting, I said, I knew what my key factors were, but I asked the rest of the team, what were the key factors in the scoring that was so high for Harris? One thing is support. The majority of implementation and training would be done here on-site, which is huge to me. They'll sit down with us, get through our processes, see if they can tailor the software to what we do, which I think is huge. They're based out of Easely, South Carolina, which is around Greenville, so not too far away from us. It's a smaller support team. The software, and I will speak to this from my experience with both Munis and Smart Fusion in previous districts. To me, Smart Fusion is easier to use. I felt that way from the very beginning, but I kind of wanted the rest of the team to kind of look at it, and they actually built a, what they call a sandbox. We've actually had the software on a demo site where we've been able to actually use it for about the last three weeks. They, or two to three weeks, they took the time and effort to build us a demo site, and then they gave us rights to go in there and play with it, and. And then we held training videos where we actually were sitting in front of the software in addition to the demo they did. So that was huge for us. Consistency of the applicant tracking software, as you'll see when we get to the call. In discussions with Mrs. Sales and Dr. Nelson with HR, we feel like we want to keep frontline, our principals are familiar with it for applicant tracking. It would be the only other software piece that would fit into, you know, the recommendation of Smart Fusion. But we feel like with frontline that, um, our principals are used to it, it would still be for our sub-management as well. And if, you know, if you have any questions on that, I know Mrs. Sales or Dr. Nelson would be glad to, to answer those. One thing with Smart Fusion, a couple of the key people there actually have served in Georgia school districts before, which I feel like is huge. The one of them that's actually research development, product development, has actually sat as a CFO in northeast Georgia before. So any question we ask about Georgia school finance reporting, he knew immediately, which I think is huge. They have a couple of other people on the support team that have actually sat in the CFO or finance director's seat, which I think is huge, because they understand what we're, we're asking for. It's user-centric design, again, goes back to they'll sit down with us and say, hey, this is how we do it now, can the software do this? Not, well, this is our software, you can't modify it, this is what you get. So that, kind of that approach, and not maybe quite that blunt, but, um, continued training. They offer different user conferences, they actually have one in Savannah every year, first week in May with the, in conjunction with the Games Conference that goes on. They actually have their user group meeting, so again, it's very convenient for us. These don't necessarily, these things are also stuff that Tyler offered, the redundant data center, this would be in the cloud. We wouldn't be hosting it on-site, so any updates that happen, they would push out for us, which limits our, it takes a lot of work off our technology staff in the, in the long run. We don't have to, you know, here's your update, you've got to perform it, you've got to shut the system down, they do all that for us. And of course, they're audit compliant for all the different, you know, their data center meets all the different requirements. It provides a disaster recovery, we also don't have to worry about that. They have several disaster recovery sites in the United States where that data's stored. From previous experience in South Carolina, we actually, um, not the fault of the vendor, this is actually on our end on IT, we actually had somebody who didn't know what they had, but we got hacked into at one point in time. So that's where that data recovery comes in huge, and they were able to actually recover that data for us easily. So that's, you know, that's, that's kind of along those lines. So on the next slide, please, Chris. Sorry, all the graphics. Pull-up slide. So what we, um, we asked Harris School Solutions, based on the rubric scores, to do a three-year proposal for us. I really don't want to do a one, well, my preference would not be to do a one-year contract. To me, if we're going to, we're going to pick a vendor, we want to stick with them. This is not something we want to go through in the next three, five, ten years, we want this to be a life, lifelong process, hopefully. So, and looking at the three-year cost, line item one is data conversion, a little over fifty thousand. That would come out of our SOR III funding or our CARES Act funding. We vetted that with Mrs. Scarborough, it meets all the requirements for CARES Act. Basically, because it gives us the functionality to do remote work from home, as well as additional security that we don't have now, being able to work from home. So that's how we feel like, and she's right at, past the, at the state level as well, so we feel like that is fine. Implementation and training, a little over a hundred and fifty thousand, would also come out of our SOR III funding, so our CARES Act. So a little over two hundred thousand we've allocated out of our federal funding. Annual maintenance costs, data backup and training for year one would be about a hundred and ninety-six thousand, and the three percent increase for year two and three. I will say the majority of those calls for years one, two, and three on the maintenance cost, we would have a full-fledged imaging system where we would image our documents. It, it's great from an eye, I will speak to this from my previous audit days, it's great that we could give the auditors actually access to our software. They could pull up, write, you know, invoices on the screen, they wouldn't, we wouldn't have to spend all that time and effort we do now compiling all those invoices, putting them together, so. It also includes a time clock system. Those are the two, you know, and then also just our normal user access fees, that's the bulk of those, of the costs, the one ninety-five, the two oh one, and the two oh eight. So over three years, the annual maintenance would be about six hundred and five thousand, that would come out of the general fund. Mrs. Preston, when she presented earlier, we had five hundred thousand in there, so that number would actually be, for year one, a hundred and ninety-six thousand. Not all of that would probably come out of next year's budget, because as we look at a timeline, we're not going to have this fully implemented, probably the six or seven months. So that fee would be prorated for, and then they'll actually adjust it to where they put it on a fiscal year basis for us as well. So I think that's huge, so. So if you do the total cost, it's about eight hundred thousand for the three years. If you go back to Tyler Technologies, which I don't have on this slide, but there is a bid tab in there, it's actually one point eight million. That was the difference between the two softwares, so. It was a huge difference. Spoke to several districts that use Harris, have been on it for at least ten years, they're well pleased. The biggest thing we kept hearing was support. Their support is great. I will tell you through this whole process, and I know it's a sales, um, trying to sell us on the software, they have been great to work with. Any questions we've had, we've got an answer back, we've got cell phone numbers for everybody on their team. So any questions we've had, we've gotten answered quickly. Frontline application we would keep, that's already in the general fund budget, so it's not an additional cost, but I just wanted to show, you know, that would still be added in. Roughly about thirty-four thousand, and we figured about a six percent increase. That may be a little high year to year, but again, that money's already in the general fund budget. We're not adding that, it's just we're not taking it away. So on the, the next slide. So based on this whole process, and I probably already said this early in the presentation, it's the recommendation of the evaluation team that Smart Fusion by Harris School Solutions be chosen as the new financial management solution for Glen County schools. And this is actually what it looks like when it's displayed on the, on the screen, so. Having said all that, there's a couple of other documents that are really just from Mrs. Saunders, they kind of recap all this information. I won't go back through those, because I kind of rehash the PowerPoint, but, um, but again, um, again, very excited to offer, you know, as a recommendation, Smart Fusion, and I'll be glad to answer any questions y'all might have, I know it kind of went through that fast. Also, any other team members will be glad. We tried to cover finance, HR, purchasing, all those different areas, so.
Is there a need for frontline to be integrated into the workings of Smart Fusion?
It, it actually has a seamless integration. We asked that question over and over again, and there's, actually, the district I talked to that's been on it for ten years, they use frontline, and he's, I've known their controller for many years now, and he said it's a seamless integration, they don't have any issues, but I look.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, in the proposal process, it was a part of it, like they already had it outlined, it was already there. It's already aligned, ready to go.
Good.
That's in the proposal, it came to us.
Yeah, that's nice.
And it will pull, they do have a, in their software, an applicant, it's not a full-fledged tracking system, but it would pull that information in frontline. It'll, it'll eliminate the double entry, some of the double entry we're having to do right now.
It'll take the applicant's inform- information and pull it into the system, so that will take off that keying that has, that rekeying that has to happen. Will just be a verification process, and then for, begin that process.
And I forgot to mention, we would, um, you know, discussions with Smart Fusion, just do, asking questions about implementation, you know, what would that look like? Six to seven months is what they project, you know, if chosen, you know, and approved next week. We would have a kickoff meeting, they'd normally say two to three weeks after, you know, approval, we'll, we'll kind of walk through that. And then we would run parallel for at least two months, is what we, they recommend two months. And then, you know, if there's, the pleasure is to do more than two months, I'm fine with that, I also feel pretty comfortable if we do two months of. You know, immediately, I think they start pulling our data in and seeing how it meshes with their system. I will say, they told us over and over again, they'd review it three or four times before they ever even start talking to us, because they're trying to make sure they're getting good data, so.
I, I think, you know, one key is us being able to get data out of AS400 or data setup, tables set up the way that we want the, the information to be presented in the new system, so that does take a lot of time, and some effort on the part of our staff, too.
Right, right. And I will say, it's huge that we have our own AS400 programmer in-house. I think, through the data conversion, talking to other districts where it went bad, um, they didn't have that person in-house, and they weren't able to pull that data out, the data tables and trying to, and we, we do some unique things with the AS400, like we, not getting too deep in the weeds, but state chart of accounts, we don't, we have our own chart of accounts we've used, but then we have something behind the scenes that uploads to the state, where the state sees it presented that way. That's something Smart Fusion said we could easily do, they actually have the software built that way. So if we want to continue to do that, or we may look at this kind of, we don't really want to reinvent the wheel, though, because everybody's used to the chart of accounts we have, so. That was also something else we talked to them about, so.
Are we going to be able, this may sound like something simple, but, you know, payroll is a huge thing, obviously. Are we going to be able to, to pay our folks direct deposit, you know, as soon as we transition? Will it see any hiccups with people getting paid, I guess is my question, because that would be a huge, huge issue.
That's the, that's the main concern.
Well, I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah, I, I will probably, um, I will, I will say, that's the two months of running parallel is really for payroll. It's making sure that we're running payroll on both systems and there's no hiccups there. I will tell you, taught other systems, that's where the hiccups come in. My, my desire, and I know Dr. Spence's desire, we've had this conversation several times, that we don't want any hiccups with payroll. I've learned not to mess with people's pay, so.
I mean, are we going to have to, are our employees going to have to go through, you know, re-submitting banking information, or is all that being pulled in, you know?
Yeah, it would be pulled in from the AS400, yeah. And that's the data conversion piece that was the fifty thousand, um, that would be pulling all that information in. They, and honestly, Smart Fusion has a great, this is something that, and Munis does, too. Has an employee self-service portal, Smart Fusion's actually releasing a new one. They've had it, they're just, they've enhanced it, they showed us the enhanced version of demo before, they've even showed some of their other customers. But they, um, that'll be in the third quarter of this year, July to September, they're going to send that out. I talked to, the district I talked to was Cowhede County, it's been on it for ten years, and they're actually implementing that July first. But it's, it's got a lot of functionality with our, our employees, we'll be able to do a lot of stuff with that, so.
So would the employees be able to, in case they want to update, it would be a four, and they could do that, okay?
Yep, change address, change address, all that stuff. A lot of stuff we're doing now in, in HR that's requiring more data entry type stuff, they'll be able to do on their own, so. So, yeah, and there's a- own. So, yeah, and there's a, just a lot of neat features in there, with the W4, definitely.
We'll also be able to push out any type of PL we need to do, like if Dr. Spencer needs to push out something. At the beginning of the year, we do back-to-school presentations that Dr. Nelson does for the entire district. We can push that out. They can sign off in that portal, and we'll have that information easi, in a format we can easily capture. So, that'll be great. They have splash screens where people will be able to see that if that's really important.
Any other questions for Mr. Greiner?
So, just, just for a level of comfort, other than the payroll thing, what are some other pitfalls that you could see maybe happening? I mean, I know the major one is, we don't, you know, we won't be able to program things, changes we want to have done right then, obviously it's a big one, but what else, other than payroll, might be something that could be a hurdle that y'all discovered? If there's not one, that's fine, but if there's three, then I'd like to know what those are.
No, I think that the payroll, of course, is the biggest concern. I think the other is that, you know, now we can go ask Mary or AS400 programmer, hey, can you do this? And we get, I will say, I think with Smart Fusion, we'll have that same flexibility. Like, they, they, it's a smaller group supportive. We ask for something, you don't have to wait to have 20 users to modify something. They're going to see if they can do it for us. And I think having people that worked in Georgia school districts is huge, that we're talking to. We talk the same language. They've sat in the seat we're in. I think, other than that, it's just some of the stuff like, like I mentioned on the chart of accounts, we don't use the state chart of accounts upfront. We have our own chart of accounts in the back. It kind of converts to the state chart of accounts. Do we want to, is that going to cause, I don't think it's going to cause any hiccups, but we just got to make a decision.
Sure.
So, I, other than that, I don't, it's just adjusting to the new, new software and getting used to it. I, to me, it's, it's, it's definitely, will be more user-friendly, and I think it just depends on, but when you've used the software for so many years, it's hard to, that's going to be there. And I'll, if anybody else wants to add, I don't know if Mrs. Seals or Dr...
The other thing I was going to say is, the first time that we do these things, the first time that we do run payroll, the first time that we do some of these state reports and stuff, they're going to be on-site with us to sit with us while we do these things. So, if there are any kind of hiccups, they're actually going to physically be here with us.
Make sure people know they get paid twice, it's not their money.
That's right.
Get my understanding. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So, when's the actual, you're, you're ready? I mean, once we vote on it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if we get the, the approval next Tuesday night, then we'll, Mrs. Saunders and I will reach out to them, and we'll get the contract stuff rolling, and then we'll have the kickoff meeting, which I, like I said, just in general conversation with them would be before the end of June, we'll have those conversations. And then we just got to figure out, six to seven months would put us about February, we, you know, just, but they, we'll talk to that, and they get all the key players on the phone call, and we try to figure out what that schedule looks like. But they're ready, so. Like, their comment was, if they got this, they're, they're looking forward to spending a few weeks at the beach.
They're ready. The sooner the better.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Greiner.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
C, D, Ms. Seals, 3D.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In 3D, you'll see the memorandum of understanding. It's the draft, because I wanted to make sure that if you had any corrections or any additions you, or things you'd like for me to go back to the college with. But Mr. Lakin's reviewed it, Dr. Spencer's reviewed it, and it kind of lays out exactly what the College of Coastal Georgia will provide to our peer professionals who are classified staff who will be going to the college in order to pursue certification and a four-year degree at the College of Coastal Georgia. The first section states what the College of Coastal Georgia will provide to our employees, the waiver of admissions, application fee, review of their prior work, personalized assistance in the application and financial aid process, options for prior learning assessment for qualified participants, waiver of prior learning assessment evaluation fee, waiver of special institutional fees. They're also providing a book scholarship of the $300, which I thought was really generous, and a schedule of classes that takes into consideration our work schedule, because we want our employees to continue to work, and they're willing to work around that, which mean, which will mean evening, primarily evening, and maybe even Saturday classes. And the bottom, the next section talks about what the school district agrees to provide, a slate of pre-selected qualified candidates. And we sent out a form to our staff members to ask them to complete it. As of today, we had more than 45 people on that form who were interested. Of course, we can't take all 45, but that you know that we do have an interest in our district. Payment of the cost of attendance to differential, differential after the participants' financial aid. So, what that means is, they will still have to apply for financial aid, and whatever is left after the financial aid is what we would then pick up. For example, if they earn Pell Grant or anything like that, then we would pick up after that. Access to meeting space once a quarter for college recruitment activities, we need them. We, that's fine. We have no problem with that. Distribution of college information materials to employees in appropriate areas, we definitely want to support our college, and sample job descriptions to the college to establish a baseline for prior learning assessment. So, we felt like that was definitely something we could, we felt we should bring to you, to see if you would agree with that. If you agree to it, and it's approved, the college will be here next week, Tuesday, to sign the memorandum of understanding.
I like that, very concise. I think it includes good information about what's expected from both sides. And this, my next question would not be covered by an MOU, but as far as our agreement with our employees that are taking advantage of this, do we have any type of...
Yes, ma'am.
Retentions?
We, we plan to have them sign something that states that they'll provide so many years of teaching to us in, in, in exchange for that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Colonel, we don't have the number of years they have to retain you, to stay here. They're saying once.
One of the things, one of the things we found out is that, we talked to Black Lake County about this. They're, they're the ones that we got this from, is that there are parapros that went through this program, they're already working in our school system. They're probably not going to leave. Those folks are from that county, and they're from here. So, they're probably not going to leave, once they get a job as teaching. In fact, I think about the people who became from parapros to teachers that I hired as a principal, I can't recall any of them that moved. So, usually those folks stay.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's a standard practice within any industry, if you're going to provide that kind of educational assistance, that you usually have some sort of term of service. So, it's good to just have it in there in case. But, I, I mean, I appreciate y'all doing this. I know that we're, like a lot of people, experiencing shortages in a number of applicants in our positions, and I think this is a great way to continue to support our staff in helping them gain new skills and in turn help us in the classroom. Just thank y'all.
You may have addressed this, and I'm sorry if you did, I just missed it, but is there any, I think maybe you touched on last meeting, but is there any type of credit for, you know, work-based learning type stuff? I mean, they're doing the job every day. I mean, I know there's all the training you need and that sort of thing, but is there any credit for, you know, a lot of parapros are teaching classes, right? I mean, that's, I mean, I talk to them, and I know they're, they're doing the work in a lot of cases. So, is there any credit through the college?
Yes, sir.
For that type of thing?
Yes, sir. Some of the initial courses, like Intro to Teaching, they don't need that. They're, they're doing that, they're in a classroom setting all the time, they don't need that. So, based on what the college representatives have stated to me, that they will look at exempting those courses based on their work in the school system. Yes, sir.
And this is, you may not know the answer to this, and it may not matter, but, you know, for people like us that were in college before hope and that sort of thing, is that kind of thing still available, no matter what your age, if you go back to school? Or is it just, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know.
Tyler, you know?
I, I don't know for certainty, but I, I do think that if your transcript records would support that, I do.
I got you. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, policy.
And everyone knows the world in which we live, and the internet is definitely something that we use every day for a lot of different reasons. And so, this particular policy will help to define, or provide guidelines to our employees in regards to how to use, when to use the internet, and expectations of them as employees of the school system. With in it, it definitely talks about use of various social media applications that we all know of, and some that we don't know of. And, but it talks about how we are to, how to think about ourselves in those environments, and if something were to come about that was not complimentary of working for the school system, what steps we would take, which includes investigation, which we do some of that now already. We do that now. So, that's nothing different, but it does allow our employees to know this is an expectation. Right now, we don't have this outlined at all. And so, this does provide an expectation to our employees regarding use of social media, and how to act in those particular environments.
There's two main concerns that we had, and the reason we wanted to have something is, folks, teachers, or other employees are on a Facebook page, and are saying things that may be offensive to the parents of the students that they teach. And that's something that we have to be careful with, because at some point in time, it becomes impossible for a teacher to teach that child, if they're doing things they shouldn't be doing outside of the school. So, that's one. And the second thing is, people actually using social media while they're supposed to be working. That's something that we need to start, at least stop, unless it's directly related to, this is what's going on in my class, this is what's going on with my team, something like that. But not just to be with your friends on social media during the middle of school day.
This policy also aligns with the Code of Ethics, which is given to us by the PSC, because I don't know if people always think about that, that what we do on social media could end up being a complaint to the Professional Standards Commission, which also licenses us.
That's going to be my point. I mean, this, this really Code of Ethics stuff, whether it's social media, or you just saying something inappropriate to a child in class, or whatever, or out, or out at dinner somewhere, I mean, you're always a teacher, you're always licensed. So, it's seen for none, and it's unfortunate, we have to put it out there, but, yeah, there's some issues.
Well, that's, that's the reason we're doing this.
You post and that sort of thing, whether it be during the day, or after, after hours, or anything else, so.
It's more difficult to enforce something like that if we don't set an expectation.
That's exactly right.
This is the good stuff.
Because it all falls back on, well, you're a teacher, and that's, that's, that's behavior of becoming a teacher.
All I'll say is that, all I'll say is that, I'll be deeply disappointed if we, if we approve this and set it on the shelf. It's kind of like the dress code thing. If a student goes all day with shorts on that are too short, and then the seventh period teacher says something, or the last fourth block teacher, whatever, not periods anymore, but if the, if the last block teacher says those shorts are too short, why would it school all day? You know, if somebody is putting something on Twitter, and they do it all the time, if nothing's ever said, then, you know, so if we're going to enforce this, let's, let's enforce it. You know, I might end up making policy just, just so it looks...
Trust me, I'm not either. We'll be addressing the dress code next month.
Well, and I'm not picking on dress code, but yeah.
No, no, we, we, we redeveloped the dress code.
But I think, I think the point was definitely, is well-taken, that we've got to have a policy in order to even...
Thank you.
We just wanted to give some guidelines, make people aware.
And so, this will have to lay on the table, of course. And any, any suggestions or things you'd like for me to review, please feel free to contact, let me know exactly what...
Any other questions concerning the policy? Thank you, Ms. Seals. And now, we're going to the Adelio Reynolds, 3J.
I'm going to ask Ms. Tate to come up, just because she kind of governs our website. Sorry.
Long day.
We're asking for an approval for a three-year contract with Adelio, who is our current website host. That contract total would be $42,900, but we are locked in for the $14,300 each year, so that's not going to change. The only difference now is that we're going to redesign the website, which we hope to do this summer, and that process takes about up to eight weeks. So, if it's approved, we'll be getting started very quickly.
That is, that's coming out of the communications audit that we did this school year, some comments that came from various stakeholders. And so, we are bringing this to you, because it is a multi-year contract, and of course, it's over $40,000. So, we're definitely excited about, I'm excited about redesigning our website, and making sure that it's something that our stakeholders can use to get to the information they need to in a, in a quick and efficient manner.
Yes.
Any questions? Ms. Daniel, you're up.
I have a few bids to be approved. We've got the food and paper bid. So, this was a bottom line, I mean, a line-by-line, line item bid. And so, the only food bid response that we received was Williams Institutional Foods, and we're at $3,095,000 for the total. And then, paper bid, we had two responses, and we split those by the items that were used, item by item. So, Williams was $189,000 of that, and Dade Paper, $161,000. And just so you know, I did meet personally with our local paper, paper vendor, but they just didn't feel like they could take the amount of business that we have, because I do try to talk to our local companies to see, you know, if they can do business with us. So, that's the food and paper responses. The other one was the milk, and after two tries, we got a milk response, and that is out of TG Lee, out of Orlando, Florida. And that's at $352,000 for the year, and we were very excited to hear from them. Borden Closed, out of South Carolina, is not servicing any school district south of Bibb County, milk. So, there are a lot of counties in Georgia that are searching for a milk vendor. So, we were very excited to hear from them after our second bid went out. Also, we're receiving the Supply Chain Assistance Grant for next year, and that allows us to buy products that were needed through the COVID, you know, kind of a supply chain issue. We got $265,374.08 on that, and so, we're planning to apply that for milk purchases. It's an easy way to keep up with where that supply, supply chain money will go. So, we'll use that for milk for next year. I think that's...
You got a surplus.
Okay, that's right. We have the surplus for Greer is our old serving line. The plan is to take the serving line that is at Golden Isles, and move it to Greer. It's a much newer serving line, and then surplus the serving line at Greer. And we're going to go ahead and get that approved, but until our serving line shows up at Golden Isles, we're going to leave both of those in place.
That's pretty smart.
So, we, when, when the time comes and we can start the move, we have the approval to go ahead and take the serving line that's at Golden Isles to Greer, and get, you know, sell the Greer serving line. And then, the Golden Isles three-compartment sink, the same way, we've got an older three, I mean, four-compartment sink that's at Golden Isles. And right now, the new four-compartment sink is on schedule for the last week in July, and we've asked them to move that to mid-July. But we're going to keep that four-compartment sink on property until it shows up for Golden Isles, so.
Any questions for Ms. Daniel? Thank you, Mary. Mr. Schwartz.
Evening. I've got two items here. What do we got up first? Declares Classroom Technology Surplus, the MEO Teach Interactive Devices here coming out of Brunswick High. These were purchased in 2013. They are no longer needed with the recently installed Promethean Active Panels that we've been doing district-wide. We've done that in two phases over the past couple of years. We're wrapping up the last, second phase, 545 classrooms. So, these devices are no longer needed. We could probably get a few dollars on resale if we sell them. So, that's my recommendation, is allow us to declare them surplus.
Any questions?
And I've got one more item here. And also, this is due to the replacement, where there are the new Promethean Panels, interactive flat panel displays in all classrooms now. Back in 2014, the district purchased 512 Casio LED projectors, and I would like to respectfully ask you to allow me to declare them surplus also.
Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Thank you, sir. Ms. Miller, you're up.
All right. And I'm actually presenting on behalf of Dr. Green, who's not able to be here tonight. But back in April, the April Board Meeting, you all approved the purchase of Eureka Math Square, the math curriculum for middle school students, and that purchase... And that purchase was based on a quote of number of students from the 2021 school year, but after receiving the exact numbers of what were predicted for 2223, that purchase needed to be increased, and the cost of that increase would be thirteen thousand eight-hundred-seven for your approval. So that one sixty-four is actually the total. You've already approved a hundred and fifty of that, so it's just a thirteen, thirteen-thousand-dollar increase.
Any questions on the Eureka Math Square? Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I believe that is all I have tonight, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Thank you, everyone. Anybody have anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for land legal and personnel.
One second.
Motion by Ms. Givens, second, bottom of the seat, in discussion, all in favor. She ends at, what is it, six twenty-seven?
Entertained it.
Let's go back and open session.
Again.
Who has it?
Me.
Mr. Medall?
Second motion.
Second. You sure? All those favor. Your name is set seven fifty-eight. Just per. Alright, we're entertain a motion for German. What about Mr. Hozie? Let's take it on Mr. Medall in the discussion. All those favor?
Aye.
I'll see you in a set seven five eight.